And then, really, the 2018 budget, I think, is just an announcement. And if anyone had any questions. The budget is printed and out in the fiscal office. We're hopefully able to answer any questions you might have. Commissioner Eggleston wanted to talk about library theater funding, talk about open projects, and then be done. We started a little bit late. Actually, one thing we're missing here is public comment. Does anyone have any public comment they want to bring before the board at this time? All right, moving on. In lieu of the Sheriff's Department being here, I guess I'll try to present what's going on with this Tyler Tech law enforcement side of things. There is software that the Sheriff's Department uses in order to keep track of warrants as well as, I believe, Todd, you could correct me if I'm wrong, but Cisco also handles other incidents, correct?
Civil process warrants.
But it's also, I think it's in addition to that also, anytime they pull someone over, etc.
Yeah, it's a whole, it's a full record.
Full record system. Unfortunately, the thing is older than me and crashing pretty regularly and needs to be replaced.
It's older than Jeff.
It's older than Jeff? Can't speak for the rest of you all.
I was in high school when it was developed, let's go with that.
Okay, on a candy computer?
It's actually written in Cobol.
Cobol.
It is written in Cobol.
I know what it is.
Our CAD system, yeah.
Is it running off the line against 400?
Yeah, I learned a little about Cobol when I was in elementary school.
So, unfortunately, well, let me back up. We got a quote from Telly Soft over a year ago, which is civil process only to replace the software. The problem is that our Sheriff's Department does more than just civil process and warrants and that sort of thing. They also pull people over, deal with the drug task force, et cetera. So, Telly Soft was not going to be a satisfactory program to replace Cisco. The only software that we are aware of at this time that can fully replace all the functions of Cisco is one done by Tyler Technologies. I forget the technical name of it, but we'll just call it the law enforcement software for now, I suppose. This integrates with our jail software, the new CAD software at the 911 Center, et cetera. It's got all the bells and whistles and is certainly a great software package for many one's estimation. I suppose part of the problem would be paying for the thing. The counties of Erie and Elk are also interested in moving to the same software package.
McKean is on board also.
Oh, McKean is on board?
Yes. Could be a four-county system. It's lowering everybody's cost.
So, I jumped on the line with the chief deputy and the sales representative from Tyler last week, and he went over this pricing, which is included here. You'll see that it's still quite high, but the individual proposal for Warren County was half a million dollars if it was just going to be us. Now, that includes enough licenses to cover every law enforcement agent in the county, not just our Sheriff's Department, and that is the slowest threshold that we can get. So, part of what I was thinking was trying to go around and shop it to the other agencies in the county. Preliminary discussions, it sounds like some departments would be on board with that, some would not, so we're unclear on whether that would actually pan out. But with the other counties, and these numbers will change because McKean is on board apparently, because we could go in for a group, Todd was willing to give us all a break. And so it included the quote here, that was, if we were to plump in with Elk and Erie, and that will need the revised version for McKean. This isn't anything that needs to be decided immediately, I just wanted to bring it to the board, particularly as it's a capital asset that we would want to budget for. From what I understand, we could pay for this over the course of years, and it's still something that's very much in the evaluation stage. But I wanted to provide you with the information, give you a general update, as well as put it on our list of active projects, since evaluating this is going to be a big deal. I have asked them to look for other software packages that we can compare to. So far, we've not come up with anything, but the search is still ongoing. So, any questions about that at this stage?
The only comment that I would make on it is, is that the other counties, especially Erie and Elk, are kind of waiting for Warren County to decide, because the price, the three-county price, which is going to become a four-county price, is a four-county price. If Warren County opts out of it, Erie County and Elk County and now McKean Counties will go up. So, that's...
So, what's the four-county price?
What's that?
Because we don't know what the four-county is.
He hasn't got a four-county price out yet. McKean has just, I mean, very recently, within the last week or so, decided that they want to be part of the...
So, they haven't provided, Tyler hasn't provided a multi-county price?
No, not a four-county price yet, no, they haven't.
So, the last time we had this discussion, you were going to consult with the municipal departments?
Yes.
And are they using something else specific to each other?
Yes, they're all using something called Visual Alert or Metro Alert, I forget which one.
Yeah, Visual Alert, it's more of a departmental...
Yeah.
It's kind of like... Trying to think of how to explain this more of a, it's like their department uses it and it uses it for citations and all that stuff. It's kind of like a system, I'm thinking of how to compare it to something, maybe like Visual Alerts is more like Excel or Word, and where this records management system is more like Accufund, that it's used by...
Oh, please.
Well, no, not like Accufund, but it's kind of more of a, it's more of an integrated, where multiple agencies...
There you go.
If, if we integrate with this and we get the municipalities on board, you know, if Ben Cafflin gets pulled over in Erie County and he becomes part of the system, when he gets pulled over in Warren County by a deputy or the city police, it shows that, oh, we gave him a warning for speeding yesterday, and he's speeding again in Warren County, he's getting a ticket today.
So, what do we, what do we do then, though, if the municipalities don't want to buy in, and they're happy with Visual Alert?
Now, so, the tri-county cost is four million, so half of what it would be. And again, that would be paid over a series of years. If we can get other municipalities on board...
Is it a third quarter?
I guess the math doesn't work for me. It was a half?
Quarter of a million. He said a quarter of a million.
And it's a quarter of a million.
Instead of 500,000.
Oh, I thought, I thought you said...
It kind of sounded like you said four, a quarter, a quarter of a million, not four.
I heard better.
Quarter of a million, probably the agencies, and it would probably go down a little bit more than that due to McKean. The Metro Alert system, not only is it not integrated, like you were saying, but it also does not have a very good civil process side of things. So, it's made more for the guy who's pulling someone over, doing an investigation, not serving warrants, tracking billings.
Not as big, it's not big into like a full records management system.
You're referring to Visual Alert.
Correct.
So, but my question remains, if they're not willing to buy in, what do we do?
Yeah, it may not be viable. Well, I mean, the question would then become, do we want to pay a quarter million dollars for it or not?
And if we did, how would we integrate it with their system?
With whose system?
With the municipal departments, or would we...
Well, we have enough licenses, we could probably give them, but I don't think that's fair.
Right. So, help me out, so, not long ago, we approved other the records retention fund money for the sheriff to give us.
For this.
Okay, but I thought that he was going to give like 50,000?
Correct.
60?
60.
But what's that, what's that going to give?
Well, it won't give them anything if we are not willing to make up the difference.
It would go toward this.
If we go toward this, the general fund money would still have to go towards this.
Okay.
So, my, my issue then is with the municipal departments. If they're pleased with Visual Alert and they don't care to participate with us, then we're stuck with the full bill. And then, how would we utilize the program with them? It would be our issue.
They would just be standalone like they are now.
Okay.
But the other county, we would still all be integrated, like all the, all the other county information would be integrated, but yes, the question really is, is it economically viable for us to buy this if the municipalities aren't essentially buying, rebuying some licenses off of us? And I don't know the answer to that question.
My understanding is they just switched to Visual Alert recently and weren't really...
Eight years ago.
Yeah, a few others, a couple of them.
But they felt that within their budget, they didn't know that if they wanted to pursue another software program, some of the municipal departments.
Okay. Yep, that is the situation at this time.
Is this a program the state police use? No, no, they use their own.
They don't share?
Right.
Correct.
Sticks are changing. There is, there is a winds of change. That radio right there, there's only one of those in the state that I can talk on, warrant pattern frequencies, and the state police. There's only one of them.
You can have it.
But they signed, they signed a paper that says, "I won't unless it's life or death talk on the state police frequency." They had to sign that I wouldn't talk on it. If I talk on it without permission, they fire me.
Yeah.
But, no, there is a winds of change, there really is.
Can I ask why you have that with you today?
To test it in the building.
Okay.
To test our side of it.
Are you crank calling them again?
Yeah, I appreciate the button, clicking, what's that clicking? But, yeah, there is a winds of change, and I, and that has been talked at a state level of, at state level, because it should be, it really, really should be, but it's hard to get the state offices to talk to each other, let alone talk to outside agencies.
So, it'd be interesting to know if you include McKean, where a price it would be.
Yeah, I, I would say it's not going to cut in half, but I would say it'd probably go down to two, I would say 50,000 off of that, I would guess, that's just a, I may be wrong.
And how many years can you pay?
Tyler said like three, yeah, Tyler said they would do three.
Yeah, something in that ballpark, yeah.
And that's about when they'll change the technology, so you have to go and go and know.
Well, that's the only, that's the only thing about that, it's just like with Tyler Technologies, the same way with our CAD, it is a, it's, our regional CAD is CAD for life. They guarantee that if there's upgrades, if there's updates, that's all part of your maintenance agreement. That's, that's the big buzzword out there now, is software for life. You buy it one time, you need to pay your maintenance agreement every year.
Maintenance agreement is a good...
Yeah, I didn't say that.
Actually, we're locked in on that, too.
Yeah.
And it's comparable to what we're currently paying, budgeted for Cisco, which we're not getting any support on, so...
Or also, we're not paying it.
True, that's why I said budgeted.
I'm paying my way.
I think you're getting something out of it. So, this is going to be an ongoing project?
Yeah, it's a, I'm bringing it today so that it can be part of our ongoing discussions and we can update it at any time, as we get more information, so, you know, there's no action requested at this time, I'm really just updating us to the board. I think the Sheriff's Department still needs to talk to the other municipality and see if we can get them on board. If that happens, then this thing becomes, even if any of them get on, this becomes much more viable.
So, who's like the lead person on it?
The sheriff, well, the chief deputy.
And, and one thing is, part of our CAD project is, was an eligible expense with our 15% money, is the interface that connects the two together. We already have that, as in, as in all 10 counties have it, so that's not a cost. Whether we use it or not, still, it's not a cost.
All right, anything else on this topic? Moving on, 2018 budget, this is out there, let us know if you have any questions. Next, library theater, do you want to talk about that?
So, we received a letter from Marcy O'Brien, the executive director of the library theater, asking for funding for their renovation project at the library theater. The costs, the overall costs of that are pretty huge, as they're doing a wholesale renovation of the building to make it ADA compliant and also as a beautification project. What I'm asking is that the commissioners support donating 20,000 dollars of our Act 13 funds to the project in order, as it is a beautification project for the community, the building is historic in nature, it's the, I think it's either the oldest or the second oldest operating theater of its kind in the United States, and I think that we should support the project, renovate it. It's a huge draw downtown economically, and it's a, it's a beautiful building, and the roof installation is going to help, you know, secure the quality of that building long-term. The Act 13 funds, we currently have over, well over 150,000 dollars, I think that taking 20,000 and utilizing it in this manner is a good way, is a good way to use the funds.
This is the same fund that Commissioner Morrison, your project is coming out of?
It is a, the funds that Commissioner Morrison is using is Act 13 funds under the...
13 uses.
13 eligible uses. This is the Open Spaces Legacy Fund, which is for community beautification, open spaces projects, you know, stuff of that nature.
All right, so there's 150 in the count, you're asking for 20?
Yes.
How do you want to go about that?
I want to write a check and give it to them.
I meant, or, is that something you wanted inserted into the 2018 budget?
Well, I don't think this needs to be budgeted, I mean, these funds are available to us, they're not a part of the budget.
I think I would like to see the eligible uses from the Open Space Fund before I would give my approval to that.
Let it be clear, we're not asking for approval at this meeting, we would have to run that through it.
Just a moment, I will read it.
So, that, that, this would be something you would have at a commissioners' meeting for approval?
I would presume so.
Okay.
Yeah, so, obviously...
I mean, we have no documentation in front of us today.
We would need to pass this part of the 911 allocation.
I can, I can get the information from Dan Claus, that's fine.
So, just a moment. So, there are three buckets for the Act 13 funds. The one is the 13 eligible uses fund, which is Section 2314 of the law. Those uses are the ones that obviously Commissioner Morrison was interested in, which is local or regional planning initiatives under the Act, and under the Pennsylvania Municipality Planning Code, which is where the information's been used for GIS data, you know, hence the ectometry fund being allocated for that. The second bucket is the legacy fund, which is, the 13 uses funds are the funds that we get directly from the wells that we operate in the county. The other two buckets are the funds that we get from the state that are from the collective taxation of unconventional gas drilling in the state. And then, basically, and then the third is the, the third is basically the Bridges Transportation Fund, which can only be used for bridges. So, the items that can be used for the second bucket, which is the one that I'm asking for, are planning, acquisition, development, rehabilitation, repair of greenways, recreational trails, open space parks, and beautification projects. I've asked Dan about this already, as far as I know, that he understands the nature of this and that he's okay with it, but I would recommend that you talk to him yourself if you want to give his two cents. You can also use it for programs to establish baseline water quality data on private water You can use it to plug orphaned or bounded oil and gas wells, acid mines, complying with the Pennsylvania Sewerage Facilities Act. There are a lot of uses for it, and counties have used it for a variety of things, from building buildings and doing a lot of different things.
But we don't own this to others library theater?
No, but you can use it for private entities, like it's been used in conjunction with various organizations to, to build facilities. So, for instance, like, you, there's money that's been used in Tioga County to build a sports facility, right, in conjunction with a...
But then who would own the sports facility?
The, the private entity, like the...
Most likely in that case, an authority, actually.
Yeah, well, an entity that's not directly associated with the county.
But if I'm not mistaken, the library theater is its own, it owns its own property and it is a 501(c)(3), correct?
Absolutely.
And this is a standard beautification project?
Yes.
So, I don't see why it'd be an issue, except that this is the same fund you're looking at to rehab some of the courthouse, correct?
Yes.
So, we just would want to make sure that there's a sufficient amount of...
Well, you know, we, we use what we can, I just think that we've never, I don't know that the county in any recent times ever supported the library theater in any meaningful way, and they, this is the first time that I think we've received a petition from them for any kind of funding. It's a very large project that impacts the downtown pretty dramatically, and if we can contribute a little bit to it from a fund that's well, you know, well-styled, that's would be it.
Okay, can you write it up and bring it to the...
Sure.
Next meeting, or whatever meeting you want to, but are you wanting to bring it to the meeting on the 13th?
Yep.
Okay, we can add that to the agenda.
I need the lead, can I just say thank you? Yeah, or the canopy on the side of the building, I appreciate that.
Your idea, as I recall?
I saw it when I walked in this morning, I was like, thank you very much.
Yep. All right, so we'll add that to new business. Very good, any further discussion on that?
We'll see a lot of it, like what comes more into that, when?
So, every year, we get roughly 35,000 dollars into the fund, and it builds up over time. It hasn't been used very much, I think previous boards thought, since it's, and it's only been around for whatever it is, 30, 40 years or whatever, previous boards kind of start, tried to stockpile it, I think, in order to use it for something big or whatever. It isn't a substantial sum of money by any means.
We don't have enough, we don't have enough wells.
Yeah.
Whereas comparison, like Tioga County, the one here, they got a billion dollars.
Yeah, well, they, I think the thing you have to remember is, is that there are three buckets, so the first bucket, the one that we were talking about, is the funds that are within the county for the wells that are here. Like, so, counties that have heavy-duty Marcelo shale drilling, they're, that bucket is really huge. Even I was talking with a commissioner from Indiana County, they used to have substantially more, they'd get a quarter of a million or half a million dollars a year in funds. We, you know, we, ours and theirs are declining, ours are declining, we get like 8,000.
Right, right, because we have three wells and we're not...
The other two, yeah, the other two buckets have to do with population more than they do the amount of drilling that's done.
Okay, any project updates we want to bring to the board?
Well, the other item that wasn't on the, it wasn't on the agenda, but I wanted, or Pam included it in the packet that I wanted to talk about, was the feasibility study for the courthouse.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I can run through it really quick, it's not...
Well, it's one of your active projects, so let's find it out for you.
So, we've got a proposal by the engineering firm to do a feasibility study for refurbishment project for the county. It involves several different items, including, and it's separated out to some degree so that we could tackle any one piece of it individually, depending upon what the results of the study are. So, one piece of it is for the roof, in order to take a look at, to have an expert in historic buildings, take a look at the roof, and evaluate, you know, what kind of condition it is, what kind of refurbishment might need to be done. It's important to note that there are several items related to the roof, including the bladder system, which collects water and disposes of it, which was done quite a while ago and meant to be a temporary solution to water issues on the roof upstairs, so that would be part of that evaluation. The second part of it is a look at the, the, well, is a look at the, the status of the entire building, basically, essentially with the exterior, so, what condition, all of the, you know, the windows are in, everything around the outside of the building, the paint, the, and then also stuff related to getting water off the roof, water out of the building, all of these kinds of things that can cause long-term damage and that are deteriorating. A third piece of it is an evaluation of energy usage, both heat and then also light around the building. This is to get a sense of where we can find savings and also what level of efficiency is being applied within the building. And this is also related to the quality, again, because heat and cold can do damage to a building that is old, so, you know, how, you know, how water and heat and energy have affected the building. So, the total cost of doing the feasibility study is 44,000 dollars, 44,100 dollars, at least that's the projected cost, and that's the cap that they would be able to spend under this. What would be produced is a feasibility study similar to what was done for the municipal building, over the city's municipal building. And, and then from that, we would, you'd define what the, the cost would be to do any of the elements within the study overall in order to refurbish the courthouse. This feasibility study is also important because it's what we would utilize to get grant funding in order to do the work, to help pay to do the work on the courthouse. Without a feasibility study, it's going to be very difficult to get the state to justify investing in this facility. It's a historic building, I think, but it's, and it hasn't had any major work or renovation in 20 years. The last major work that was done on the building was in the late 90s, and I, and I think that it shows on the facility itself. So, again, I'm proposing that we use the Open Spaces Fund to fund the feasibility study. This is, again, tied into a beautification project, this building is historic in nature, it's a beautiful building, we need to keep it, keep it beautiful, keep it vibrant, and I think this will do that.
Very good.
Now, this is on for Wednesday?
This is, yep. And I have, I have packets for anybody that is interested in, in reading the proposal, I'll supply those to Brian and whoever else is interested in looking at them, see what they're proposing as far as the work goes.
All right. Any public comment on that? Questions from the board? Very good. Other projects we want to update on?
I just want to let you know that for the partnership program that I was talking about with the Career Center, I had talked about meeting with the school board, and basically, I'm working with John Shreve right now, this solicitor, on a revised agreement to give to the school district that will create a, kind of a, an umbrella agreement so that we can just work with them on a regular basis, and then it'll be the job of this board to just determine what funds are allocated to that project on an ongoing basis.
Right.
And this is along the lines of what Commissioner Cafflin had proposed initially, anyway. So, we should have that this week. If we can get it done fast enough, I may ask to have it put on our agenda so that everybody's able to review it and then approve it, so that then we can propose it to the school district.
Why don't we go ahead and add it to the agenda, if it just has to be tabled, then that's out.
Okay.
And that way, we're safe.
And that's the partnership program?
Yep.
With the school district?
The Career Center, yeah, or the school district, yeah.
Okay. Todd, how's the CAD system going?
There's actually a kick... There's actually a kickoff meeting tomorrow in Elk County. It's ordered. All the hardware equipment's ordered. Right at the moment, right at the moment, we're still second on the list of us going to it. Maquis County's first because their CAD system is literally end of life at the end of this year. And, but I may allow, approve the Erie and Crawford to kind of bump up ahead of us because they're having issues with their CAD. They're having some downtime, which fortunately we don't have. Ours is antiquated, but it's still stable where they're losing, they're having problems, major, here in Crawford County, so.
So when do you think we'll have to cut over?
We will, officially, we're hopefully going to cut over in June.
June, okay. Commissioner Agelston, do you have an update on the signage for the courthouse? Is that your project?
Yep, basically, we need two other proposals. Matt's put together a, you know, batch of information that we're going to circulate and find two other sign companies to do proposals, and then we'll evaluate all three and then move forward with whatever, you know, whatever's appropriate.
Moving the 2018 budget over to the done category, as well as your Christmas party? We haven't had a plan. We haven't signed anything yet, or?
We have not. I emailed Attorney Senate, and he is working on all the documentation.
Okay, so we'll set that up hopefully in the next couple of weeks to have a little signing party. All right, good. I'm not seeing any other, oh, this is your 3C partnership. Not seeing an update. Do you have anything else? Oh, wait, early intervention program. I'll update you on that. We actually have a meeting set tomorrow with the company that we awarded in order to kind of do the kickoff, what we want to accomplish in the early intervention program. It's in the morning sometimes, so. Before that meeting, if you had any ideas on things you're sure you want them to look into, you can either shoot them to me or come to the meeting and ask Mark. I think that's it. Anything else?
What did you do to your phone?
Well, while we're talking about county business, I dropped it. And it broke.
I was just looking at it. It looks like somebody chewed on it or something.
He stepped on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm going hungry. Okay, upcoming meeting. So on the Wednesday meeting, we now have your Stuthers request, your courthouse renovation thing, and potential of the partnership with the local school district. Were you calling out the 3C partnership or something?
Yep.
All right, we've got some proposals ready to, officially licensed, which is no big deal. The 2018 budget will be the twenty...
Can you take that off there?
Yeah. We're not ready to pass that. Pointing to the Workforce Development Board, the WCCBI presented Dr. Clark as the representative because he's served on other boards, other workforce with boards, and knows the system really well. So I think he'd be a great addition to the team. Oh, you already got refurbishment on there? Anything else that needs to be amended or added to this agenda? Oh, did we want to have the transit authority or the, whatever you want to call it, the three-way agreement?
Yeah, I suppose that should be on there.
All right. Anything else? Okay, schedule. I'm around, I don't know. Yeah. No real estate between now and next Monday, just getting around. General discussion? Public comment?
I got one thing.
I have a question. We have heard reports that there are calls going out asking whether you're receiving a call vote for Commissioner Morrison or Kathy Rapp, if that decision were to appear on ballot. Are you contemplating investigating, exploring?
I have no comment.
Paul Adlieb also asked whether I was interested, and I can go on record saying I'm not going to be ever running against Kathy Rapp.
We heard that your name was mentioned. Okay. I didn't hear it myself, so I'm going on second-hand information.
Right.
And it was my name mentioned?
It was not. From what I can gather, it was to Republican super voters.
Yeah, they probably won.
Probably wouldn't vote for you anymore.
I think that's a little presumptuous.
Sorry. Anything else?
Truth hurts.
Okay, Tom?
The only thing I have is with the 911 funding the way it is now, the fifteen percent monies that they purchased our CAD and that type of stuff and some other cost sharing things that we have, the state has a leftover. There's an excess there that we didn't let the legislators take and try to balance the budget with it. It's for 911, 911 only. We are probably going to be getting a little bit of a windfall. I've had one short conversation with Commissioner Kaplan about maybe being able to use that windfall because it's only going to be a one-time.
How much is the windfall?
Not sure. Statewide is fourteen million dollars, thirteen point eight million dollars. But when you throw that into the formula, obviously Philadelphia gets a huge chunk. I'm guessing, I'm guessing in the thirty thousand dollar range towards Warren County. What I want to propose, once we find out exactly how much it is, and I get some pricing, and it's because it's not, it's not ever going to happen again because they're going to readjust things. So there won't be that money left over come next year. So it's only going to be a one-time thing. I'm looking at a few capital purchases, like in the 911 center. You know, we've talked, we've talked for a few years of replacing the lights in there with LED lights to save electricity. You know, there's kind of a need for a couple tables and things like that, and then maybe some other... We're looking at a new plotter for assessment office that we could, I already mentioned to Karen about it, that we could take some of that money and put it towards that because I have the plotter I have that's broken, this assessment office's old one. When they got the one that theirs just broke, so mine's like double old and, you know, and the one or two maps that I needed to print a year. You know, if I'm able to, if we're able to take some of this money and put it towards that one, great. There was a couple other little things, but it just, you know, to be able to, like I said, it's only going to be a one-time thing. It can only be on stuff that's eligible for 911, so. More to come. Like I said, I don't know, I can't guarantee that that's going to be thirty thousand dollars. It might be ten thousand. I don't know. It's just, depends on how, when that goes into the formula, where it gets divided up, and, but if there will be a windfall coming, and possibly, I was just told on Thursday, possibly even before the end of the year. But, so maybe in January, once we know exactly how much that is, maybe be able to bring a few of those projects. I'm looking at cost sharing and cost saving stuff with that. We buy new LED lights that are in the 911 center, because they're on 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And we save a little on electric bill. That saves on general fund down the road, so, you know.
Sounds good.
Here, it's one time. It's not going to the general fund, 911.
Yeah, it'll go right into the, yeah, and that's what, it's not going to be one of our quarterly payments. That's why I got to make sure I tell Denny, too, that they'll see that as, all of a sudden, it's going to be like, hey, why isn't this one of our two hundred thousand dollar payments? Why isn't only this? But it's going to be a separate one, so there's, and that was, and that was to make sure that, you know, all of a sudden, next year, you know, you guys understand, but other counties will be like, all of a sudden, it's like, well, wait a second, where's that other forty thousand dollars you got last year? Or ten thousand, or whatever, doesn't matter, so. You guys listen to me. I hear, I hear discussions about the county. Money? Oh, you heard that, you know, they're going to be another one. But thank you, thanks.
I went down to Indiana County last week.
I heard that.
Yeah, their 911 wind center's pretty impressive.
Yes, it is. It's not real old. You met, I met, you met Director Stutzman.
Yeah. Well, he knew you. You talked about him very pleasantly.
Yeah. Tom's a good guy. He's been doing this a lot of years.
They were talking about pictometry for the state, and they seem pretty convinced that it's happening.
Well, it is. We've kind of discussed that, but the problem is, is it's not going to be the level, it's not going to be the level...
That's why I asked him, was, my understanding was that it was going to be like very high...
High level, and there's, you know, there're not going to be the changes. There's not going to be the obliques. It's only going to be straight down. They're not going to have the, so it's, yeah, it's...
And how many years are they rolling that over?
Well, right, it may happen. They still don't even have, they haven't even put it out for bid yet. They're still looking at the bid process.
Yeah. They said that I needed to talk to, or that we should talk to Reader Reynolds at CCAP, and that CCAP's driving a lot of it, and that they have information, and that it's... They seemed, they seemed pretty convinced that it was like moving forward, and then it was going to be a thing.
But what we're already planning on doing is so much better than that.
Well, I'm not saying not to do it. I'm just saying, like, boy, it...
And as this progresses, it may be that like the next time down the road, we could partner with that and just add in, you know.
Yeah. I was just wondering, because like, from my perspective, it seemed like whenever...
Right, the problem, well, like I said, the problem is, is they haven't even put it out for bid.
Yeah.
So, and pictometry may not get Eagle Eye. They may not get it. There may be some other company. And more than likely, by the time this all rolls around, the leaves are going to be on. So there's going to be at least, at least this time next year before they may even start flying and know that the West Side will be the last side that gets flown. So it could be, it could be into spring of nineteen before we even possibly see anything and not as high quality, so. But they're going to pay for it.
Anything else?
Just a reminder, my office is closed Thursday.
Okay. Good, well, if there's something else, we'll have a journey.